Waiting for Councilman Wright. We've been told he is a few minutes away, so we'll get started. So tonight's meeting, this is a workshop about auditing the code. So it's going to be mostly discussion amongst council for prioritizing what code need to be modified, or if it, what, if anything needs to be modified. So if there's time at the end, we'll do public comment. Other than that, there will be at the council meeting, opportunity for non-agenda items. So, anyway, so Brett, you kind of started this a while ago, right?
Yeah. It's been in the works for a bit. So do we want to go with what was in the packet? Or I just kind of have a list of various topics that we might want to hit for issues that people have talked about over the years, or that we've dealt with. I can kind of say those in no particular order, and see if any of them pique interest, or we can kind of hit some of the stuff in the packet first that...
Is there anything in the packet?
There was, the swimming pool, right?
Oh, right. Yeah, that's right.
And that's a pretty easy one. It's just a mirror essentially the state statute, right?
Yes, sir, and the Florida building code. Yes, sir, to mirror the state statutes and the Florida building code. And I included the...
It's on?
Is it on? Okay. I included the section and highlighted it from the Florida building code as well.
Yep.
It would still, I mean, you could still, people could still do a six-foot if they wanted to, but it would not be the necessity. The necessity would be 48 inches, as the state requires.
Okay, and that's, yeah, and that's, so it's the section 113-238 of our... Is that right, Rightcliff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, yeah, it's just about the height of the fence or barrier that must be constructed or set up for safety purposes. And so we're just proposing to go into comply, follow what the state does, so that there's no confusion, because there's been issues of confusion in the past. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Does anybody have any objection? Okay. All right.
Apologies for being late. The, just kind of in the same vein of thinking, there have been instances in the past with regards to pool setbacks. So the town in the Atlantic has a 10-foot requirement versus the county, which has a five-foot requirement. There wasn't even an instance where a house was built and wasn't noted that it was, anyway, the original plans had the, had the pool, the five-foot setback, and the house was appropriately situated a lot, so it led to some consternation, but...
Yeah, I believe, because I'm actually dealing with it, Melbourne Beach has a five-foot setback too. So, just another...
We've gotten several zoning, you know, requests, or board of adjustments for...
Variances.
Variances for those, I know, over the years, and I think Cliff has talked about it too.
Yes, we've had, golly, we've had numerous variances for the pool setbacks. Usually they'll get around seven feet, sometimes five. They've been shorter than that, actually, too, that they've granted, so there's been a lot of that.
Okay, so is that something what we would prefer to do, is just go to a five, it would be compliant, following line of Melbourne Beach, which is essentially our neighbor, and Berrard County, which is our other neighbor, I guess, so...
Yeah, I'm not advocating for it, again.
Right, right, no, that's what this is for, exactly what this is for.
Right. I mean, that's an easy one, right?
Well, it is, but we would also have to adjust the setback for the deck or cage to reflect that and give...
Fair enough.
Change that up as well.
Off the top of your head, do you know...
The pool decks or cages are four feet, so probably reduce it down to two.
Two and a half, two, two and a half, okay.
That way it gives a little bit of grass area for the water.
How many of those do you deal with a year? Is it several?
The pool variances?
Yeah.
We've had years where we've had, oh, six, eight of them in a year, maybe a dozen.
A lot of that has to do with the pre-existing condition where the house, when it was built, doesn't allow for what I would call a reasonable-sized pool without encroaching upon the setback. So you, otherwise you'd have a, basically, a lap pool, was at least some of my experience when I'm on board, on the Board of Adjustments.
What else you got, Brett?
All righty, so I guess we'll go forward with that. And this is going to be in no particular order, I'm just going to kind of go about them, but I'm going to try to hit the easier ones first. I've had some people bring up the idea of doing away entirely with our section on outdoor cafes, and that that was an outdated provision, and kind of, you know, as the towns evolved and people like the idea of, you know, allowing that. I don't know if there's any thoughts one way or the other. Again, we're not making, we don't have to make final decisions here, this is kind of just getting initial feel and potentially ranking it if we end up having a bunch of priorities that we want to deal with. So this would be 113-249. And, so if nobody has any, you know, initial compelling thoughts or reasons on it right now, we can just revisit it, but...
What else is on there?
The proposal would be to just remove, redo, do away entirely with outdoor cafes.
What else is on the list?
So, I mean, I got a bunch. All right, we hit the yardways, we hit the townhouse plating, we did the election qualifying. All right, so I'll get to, you know, we revised the noise code, but that needs to be revisited. It was honestly something that Paul and I were in the works of, the sound amplification section, we were moving to that. And so we still need to deal with that. I'll come back to that, though, I'm just putting it out there, because it's on my list here. Oh, our sign code, I know we updated our sign code recently, but having written the sign code for City St. Cloud and Claremont, and looking at ours, I can tell you that technically ours is still unconstitutional, because we define, we essentially make message distinctions, right, by saying a for-sale sign, a real estate sign, a, you know, political sign, things of that nature. If somebody, you know, was upset and really wanted a challenge, you know, we could have a problem there. So that's just an issue we may want to look at, you know, it's, those type of things are supposed to be time, place, manner, like neutral-type restrictions, so it's like size, the day...
Electronic and stuff like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that was something we had talked about, Paul and I, too, along the lines, because of the, I've written the name of the case, it was not too long ago, 10 years ago, not too long ago, but came up in it not being constitutional any longer.
Yep.
Primary, one of the primary objectives when that was revised was to be clear with regards to changeable movable signs versus static, if I recall off the top of my head.
Previously, yeah, that was, I think, a pressing issue, certainly.
Correct. And then I made, there were other, the other reasons you cited, I'm not as familiar with.
And then, I know, we had this recently come up at a totally unrelated issue, but at one of our meetings, and we were looking at signs in the residential area, and we noticed that, like, remember it was something like a, something very large, in my opinion, it was like six by 10 or something like that, it was allowed in one of the residential districts. I think it might have been, what is it right along the A and A, is that R3?
R3s were the, like, the townhomes.
Right, exactly. I think there was, like, some really large signs that were allowed there. I'm not saying one way or another, but I think that might be something we might want to visit. So, all right, let's see here. We mentioned this before, the electric bikes. I don't know, I mean, I think it's more of a state situation, but I think all of us can relate to having had a situation where, you know, a kid is essentially riding a moped, but it's silent, and it blows through a stop sign, and you had no idea who was there when you're trying to go through it. It's like, back in my day, they were called mopeds, and you could hear them from three blocks away, because it was a two-cycle engine, like, ah, so you knew something was coming. But now with these electric bikes, it's, there's just been some sketchy situations.
Those are regulated by state statute, I think Chief...
I'd say, I guess it's just more of an enforcement issue on our end, it's not so much a regulation issue. Not to say that you aren't enforcing, I just know that there's just been some scary situations, so...
Chief, that is not a town issue, that's a state issue, right?
The, we have to allow e-bikes to operate anywhere that a regular bicycle can operate, and we have ramped up our enforcement on it. But yeah, it's, it's, we, I'm very, we're very aware of it.
Right.
I get a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls about it. I've stopped some juveniles on e-bikes. I've got an order that if we do stop them, that a parent or guardian is contacted, so they're inconvenienced to come out to have to deal with that. And then we will ultimately end up writing citations for it under a Florida statute.
That's interesting, saying that they're allowed, you know, wherever bikes are. Do we allow bikes in our parks? Because maybe that's an area that we could do something, because I've seen kids ripping around Orlando Park on them, like, doing jumps and stuff like that. Somehow that's not an issue, you know, but other things are in that park, I just don't know how that works.
We did have an issue down, we did have an issue with some of the swales and things that were at the end of the bed path, bedway, but that was dirt bike, dirt bikes.
Oh, really?
Those are, yeah, gas-powered bikes, so we took care of that.
Okay.
We nixed that. And I agree, some of these e-bikes, man, they, they cruise right along, and it's pretty scary.
That doesn't qualify as a motorized vehicle, because we have signings that prohibits those, obviously, that's kind of like, no through traffic, it's probably not very enforceable.
Correct.
I guess maybe I would ask Kristen if we could potentially look into the possibility of, at least just saying something about the town parks with the e-bikes. And then, okay, so, let's see here. Do we want to do anything on, so this is kind of like an informal thing that we have right now, town policy, I guess, type situation, for if you want to have, say, like, a block party and do a street closure. But there's nothing, like, officially on the books, and I didn't know if we, if we wanted something official, and if it, you can have that one neighbor who's just not neighborly, and you have 10 people who are all on board, and then that person's, you know what I mean?
Mike, do we have an issue with that?
You have to get everybody's signature on the block.
You have to have everybody's signature on the block and stuff, and it doesn't say, like, you know, we do, like, a speed calming device if it's 75% of the people, we make it have 100% if we're going to close the road down. And it's covered in there, but not the percentage and stuff, it's, I can issue them.
Yeah. And it's just for, you know, one-time, night-type situation, if you get everybody's signature. Does anybody have a feeling on that? Like, if you, if you got 90% of the people, so that that one person had to deal with being good neighbor?
I mean...
Don't think it rises to an ordinance, I guess, is my...
Yeah.
Okay, well, how about a policy?
Policy, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I'm at least bringing that up.
If we don't, if we feel it's...
All right, well, put it on the list of something.
If we feel we need to give the direction to the town manager to be more specific, then yes, that would be appropriate.
Okay. We talked about it before, do we want to hit storage containers for that Berrard County situation about, like, your ski shed or man cave?
I thought it had, it had been established, basically, we're kind of maxed out with what we have.
As far as the accessory structures, that's how we're already attacking it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty.
Because it, we went over that stuff with Paul, I can't remember all of the details, that's been a while back, but we did iron all those issues out.
Right, because there's size limitations that we have in place that would prohibit the full-size shipping container, can't stack them because of height restraint.
Right, and placement.
We can't, we can't restrict decor...
Right.
But we do have restrictions against outdoor, or plumbing to an outdoor facility. Power is not a restriction, though?
No, they can have lights in.
Basically, everything that we can do legally and constitutionally, we already have.
Right.
We believe we're in a good...
Our, excuse me, accessory structures are, we have a height regulation on them? Because wasn't that part of the issue?
We do.
The guy was stacking them?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a 14-foot max.
Okay, well, let's think, I mean, for an accessory structure 14 feet, is that too high?
Well, you can put one shipping container, but you can't put two, it's basically what amounts to.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, what accessory structure would you have that, I mean, I guess if you...
I think it depends, too, on the distance from the fence, probably the height.
Right. It's four foot for eight, and every foot you come off, you gain a foot and a half more of height, up to 14 max.
Okay. So related to that issue, and this is a real thing, I'm, like, living it, and I know other people are too, you know, like, having a detached mother-in-law suite, I think we prohibit that right now, but I feel like there would be a way to appropriately regulate it. I know the concern is, you know, how do you establish that it's familial, you know, versus you're just renting it out to a stranger? But is that something that people would want to consider, is allowing a detached mother-in-law suite? Again, you know, we have the ability to regulate the size and the setbacks and such.
As opposed to living with your mother-in-law?
Yeah, as opposed to them being physically in the house without a little bit of a separation.
They're not allowed now?
They're not allowed.
But as I go around in the Atlantic, I do see, are they grandfathered in?
Well, that, maybe some of those are, but I think the distinction would be detached, so...
With plumbing, is the key there, too, because you do...
There's several of them.
No, fair enough, fair enough.
If you walk around in the Atlantic, there are several of them, as you walk around, and they're older houses, Spanish-style, so I don't know if they were grandfathered in, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, probably, yeah.
But yeah, I would, yeah, I've got a great mother-in-law, for the record, and I would be happy to entertain something like that.
Okay. What is everyone else?
It's because we're just talking about ADUs.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
An ADU. Additional doors.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's low on the priority list for me, but...
Yeah.
Yes.
What else you got?
Okay, I'm going to say it's high on the priority list for me, I guess I will announce it right now, but, you know, there's a very good chance that I will be moving to Melbourne Beach in order to get a new house that can fit my parents. And the fact that we didn't have the ability to have a detached mother-in-law suite is kind of an issue. So hopefully it won't be until the fall, and my time, my term will just naturally term out, but, and I just, I guess I'm at that age, and I know other people that are dealing with it too, so I think it would be something decent to prioritize. I just pass to all of you this landscaping one. Three of us dealt with this one quite a bit, remember?
Yes, we did.
We, on code enforcement. So this is 103-286, it's called, it's landscaping, and there's actually a couple of issues, because, Joe, this came up in a meeting a couple of months ago, remember, with the corner lot, with the...
Was there rock in there? Yes, sir.
Exactly. Okay, so I'm going to ask you to, in a second, address that issue, I'll first hit this one. So, subpart B says lawns, says all grass areas and lawns shall be properly maintained in a neat and attractive manner, which sometimes in code enforcement we found was tough to, yeah, you know, and...
Quantify.
Exactly. The next sentence does try to quantify that, and it seems a little surprising. Says, "Any grass area or lawn allowed to grow in excess of eight inches in height." So eight inches is the allowable limit in height, "shall be deemed to be not properly maintained in a neat and attractive manner." So, I'm not trying to be like a stickler nitpicky, but, you know, we dealt with this on code enforcement, and I was surprised, I mean, eight inches is, I guess it just depends a lot, I mean, I don't know, like...
Where you baseline your eight inches starts from, I guess, is the first question as an engineer I'd ask.
Yeah, that's a fair, that's a fair point, right? Especially have, like, Zoysia next to, like, Pensacola, you know what I mean, it's just going to be natural.
Now you're talking.
Yeah.
Yes, I get what you're saying.
But eight inches kind of seems pretty high. You know?
I agree.
I mean, it's not, I don't think we're going to be out there, you know, with a ruler, like, hardcore measuring, but I think if maybe you say, like, six or five, it's, like, easier to distinguish, like, eight inches is, like, hey, you're closer to a foot.
But, but it goes back to neat and attractive, and I know a couple, it's probably three years ago, you and I had a very robust discussion about neat and attractive, because I can see neat and attractive...
Right.
And you're not seeing neat and attractive.
Right.
But, I mean, I think majority of the people in the room would look at a lawn and say, "That's neat and attractive."
Right.
And if they saw one that was overgrown or whatever, it wouldn't be neat and attractive. So I, I personally don't have any problem with that terminology, neat and attractive.
Okay.
I know it's subjective, I get it.
Right.
But, I mean, I think you'd be hard-pressed to walk around in the Atlantic, and you see a yard that's just completely overgrown, and say, "Yeah, that's not neat and attractive."
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Fair.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily come up all that much, but it did, and, like you said, those houses are, for the most part, easy to call out. But, I don't know if we have a, we want to leave the eight inches?
I think it's nitpicking, I'm on the same page with you, you know? I mean, there's some, I almost think it comes down to enforcement issue instead of what's written, you know, because there's some houses that are not neat and attractive, and they're, and an eight-inch lawn is different than eight-inch weeds, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Who am I to say what somebody could do with their weeds?
Yeah, and it's very true, because I would rather it actually be eight inches of green. I literally lived this between a neighbor who's catty-corner and a neighbor who's next door. I'd rather have the eight inches of green, because that's, actually looks greenery appealing.
Right.
Versus a sandpit. So maybe we clarify that. A sandpit is not neat and attractive.
Yeah, but then you get, then you get into native landscaping versus, if you're prescribing the type of landscaping, that gets difficult.
I should have brought the definition, because they should have lawn defined, I believe it is.
But you're seeing all kinds of different lawns now, I mean, honestly, there's some ground cover out there that looks neat and attractive, but it's not grass.
Right, yeah, which I'm fine with.
Correct.
And then there's, you know, now you have fake gra, you know, a lot of people putting fake grass in, so, yeah.
So it's on the list, what else you got?
Okay.
Well, you're talking about that real quick, I know it has come up in forward to St. Billy Board when they're talking about artificial turf and things like that, there are concerns about the microplastics and things.
That's what I was going to say, do we want to address the artificial turf as well?
Yeah, so if you're talking about grass and lawns, I might want to address that at the same time.
Yep. See, yeah, I guess because that's like an environmental, you're saying, the microplastics?
Yeah.
Just from a look, like...
I know.
People do it on the front, eh, whatever, but backyard, I think it's the way to go. Looks good, and it's easy to, you know, you don't have to deal with it. Can look somewhat hooky in your front yard, sorry if anybody has that. All right, so, and then Joe, what's the other issue from this particular section?
Stuff that are planted in the right-of-way?
Right-of-way.
Yeah.
That's right.
A lot of stuff that's planted in there, should be a maximum height growth of two foot, because of the, you know, requirements when people drive it back out of their driveway, not being able to see somebody.
Yep. So, yeah, that's something that we know we need to address, Kristen, is clarifying in this 103-286, what can be planted, or the height and type of stuff, right? Because it wasn't, didn't we also have an issue about the stones being in the right-of-way?
Yeah, stone, crushed coquina.
Like, that's, we should not allow that.
We should not allow that now.
Right.
Mulch, we shouldn't allow.
Is that currently the case, or is that a gray area?
That's currently, we do not allow that right now, except for this one house that has rock in the catch basins.
Right, because there was, he, they misinterpreted some of the language in here, though, right? Oh, yeah, what was it? I remember that. Or it was the measuring of the right-of-way that they had a misinterpretation of, I think, or that's what they said.
Not sure, sir.
And I think that's something that we also might need to clarify, is the right-of-way, like, where it starts and how far it comes on to your, because it's supposed to be, what, the right-of-way goes five feet onto your property?
That's 30 feet from the center line, right?
Center line of the road, yeah.
That's where, 30 feet from the center, that's where.
But it varies, I think there's some areas that are 20 or something.
Okay. Yeah. That's what happened with this situation, is they, that's what happened with this situation, is they only measured five feet on, I think. Okay. All right, sorry.
Have they realized, too, where their water meter is? That's most, right where the right-of-way ends is where the water meter usually is.
Far back. Yeah. Okay, so we know this is one that we need to address.
We want one.
Yep, exactly. So let's put that, I think, somewhat high on the priority list. Okay, this is just kind of like a, I don't know, administrative-type situation. We, Doug crafted a fine policy for what staff has the authority to...
Kermit.
Yep, exactly, Kermit policy, approve without needing counsel. So this one just needs to be deleted, but this is, this is section 2-4 in our codes, says council approval required to obligate town. And it says, "No member of the council, mayor, or town officer shall individually or as a member of any committee, department, office, or board make or create any commitment contract or obligation whereby the town may be bound without the express consent or approval of the council." Provide any such commitment contract, okay, so that would be overly burdensome, and we would be having council meetings strictly just for the purpose of approving contracts and expenses. So we probably need to just delete this, or make reference to the policy, the procurement policy, or something of that nature.
Is this new?
No.
Okay, so it's old?
Or you could add it here. We, we need to update the procurement policy anyway, I think, with some language we've talked about, so maybe update that and put that in there?
Yeah, yeah, just replace, put the procurement policy here, or just make reference to it.
Yeah.
Something on, something along those lines, yeah, whatever's the best, best way. I wouldn't want to put it in here just because it's...
Right, it makes it harder to change, and that's the concern.
Right, exactly. Yeah, so I mean, you could probably put that into, about the contracts, into, you know, allowing a policy to change by resolution, and add it into the resolution, that way, we've done, like, other things, when we change numbers and things.
Okay, so probably keep this, but just make some sort of reference to that, you know what I mean? You know, no one shall obligate the town, you know, except in compliance with the procurement policy, blah, 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 stuff like council, yada, yada, something like that.
So we're not in full compliance with this one right now, Mike?
No, we haven't.
Not, not asking you to, you can put the fifth, you can put the fifth if you want.
We're always in our contract, but it depends what's, you know, sometimes they're like $10,000, or...
Yeah, I know, signing on this spectrum could be a contract, considered, you know, contract.
Yeah.
There's some leniency that needs to be granted and written, that it could, fair enough. So we need to make it consistent with how we operate.
What else you got?
Okay. Have, gosh, I don't have the details on it right now, apologize, but I know there, we had something about a fence setback issue on corner lots. Came up.
So that, historically, those corner lots are...
10 feet.
10 feet? Yeah, and I know we've had people request variances because they're on a corner lot, and now I know, we have had people that have replaced their fence that was either grandfathered in or put it in the middle of the night, and, and they keep their five-foot setback, but there's a, there's a traffic safety issue, concerned with it. So...
Seven or three.
The code is 10 feet, and you're in a corner lot, and a lot of folks that are on a corner lot, right or wrong, would like to have a five-foot setback so that they can have more backyard, is typically how it, the rationale behind it. All right, there's a traffic safety issue with it, I'm not going to say which way I go, but I don't think the code needs to be updated with the rest of that.
And that setback is from the right-of-way?
From the property line, which is this edge of the road.
Right. So if you think about that, that's pretty far back. 10 feet, so you already go 30 in, and then 10?
You go 30 from the center of the roadway.
Right, you get to the right-of-way. Get to the right of way.
We're gonna always discuss it.
Pretty.
It's, it's a, yeah, so priority ranking, if you guys feel it's a priority, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna always discuss it.
I think it's something that probably should be revisited, whether or not it's a hot priority, it's fine.
What else?
Um. Okay. So we know the sound amplification stuff has to get revisited. Um. All right, so here's one that's, um, there's just some confusion and I think, you know, Mike's aware, but we're aware, but that it needs to be cleaned up. Um, special events. So the. There's a special event section. So section eight dash seven, special events, as the town manager or as designee may issue permits. For special events within town parks. So it's, special events are just within town parks. But then there are other sections like, um, the food truck one, which was created way after this. Special event one and, um, like the sound amplification equipment that make reference to, you know. Having a food truck or having a sound amplification, uh, for a special event. Certainly in the food truck ordinance or code provision. It's also that the food truck is allowed on private property, so, but it's for a special event on private property. That's not, you know what I mean, uh, in conformance with it being in a town park. So we need to address, uh, which way we want to go with these special events. That can a perm, are we okay with permitting? With creating a permit for a special event that is. In locations that are not town parks. Which then has the implication of the whole reason, because you know, it's private property, you can do whatever you want, you know what I mean? But it's for the purpose of then falling within the food truck and the sound amplification permit. So that people can't try to bust your chops if you have a unapproved special event.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we'll put it on the list.
Okay, I just want to also get a feel, but this is definitely like something that has to be, uh, dealt with because, um.
Ambiguous.
But yeah, and it's just, it's been creating issues for a little while, uh, prior to any of the recent ones. Um, and I think we need some sort of like permit. Well, that's another, it's related to this, but there's another permit that we need to kind of work on. Um, all right. All right, so that addresses the food truck issue too, because again, in there, they reference the food trucks. All right, the special bit, all right, um. Do, uh, shed setbacks. Do we want to visit that? Um. What is it? It's like. Seven feet or something? It's something that I think is too far, but, um.
From?
Uh, from like your fence line, oh, what is it?
Four, it starts at four feet for up to eight feet high.
Okay, but the setback from like your fence?
Yes, four feet.
Side, four feet.
And then what about your, your house?
Five feet.
Five feet, okay, so five feet and four feet. Okay. So in a lot of areas, you only have like ten feet, then you technically couldn't even put a shed in. So I think, uh. We know people are willing to go to prison for sheds, so. This needs to be addressed.
One, one person.
But, um, that's here nor there. Uh, and that's not just our town, that's Melbourne Beach too. Um, but, uh, yeah, so I think we should probably revisit that setback situation and try to find some sort of happy medium. Um. And you know, maybe it's, maybe it's that when you, well. Just put it on the list as something that I think is fairly high that we should revisit. Um, okay. All right, now I'm going to get kind of more into some of the, um. And I guess you could call, uh, like zoning development type stuff. Which is more like theme based for like what we think, you know, the direction of the town. You know, we had the fifth AV committee a couple of years ago. Um. And, you know, we kind of developed some findings and such from that. It didn't go too far just because when you're subject to sunshine, uh, you're so constrained with the free flow of information. Um. But, um, you know, there were some things that came out of that that, um. I thought maybe be some decent ideas that we may or may not want to explore. Um. One resident had an idea of, uh. Um, the term's escaping me. There's a term of art for it, a legal term of art. Um, but there's a way to go about kind of how we had with the drive-through, how in the Atlantic essentially was. You know, we, we drafted the code to where we only had like one fast food type place, right? So the idea would be doing something similar, um, but for like big box stores. Uh. Like the, um.
Formula.
Yeah, formula, formula business, thank you. And so is that something we want to explore, um, to?
Keep the small town feel.
Yeah, to keep the, the beachside small town feel without having two surf styles that are across the street. And I'm not picking them out like to pick on them, I'm just using it as an example. Um. Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know generally there is. I thought when we had that discussion with Paul that.
It's gonna take some work to craft it correctly.
Yeah, his feedback was that it would be, um, difficult.
Right.
If, especially I guess maybe depending upon the scope or how you wanted to, to achieve.
Okay. Um, so, and then, uh, along those lines, there was another resident suggested maybe having, although I think we, I think the state might have addressed this and we can't really do this anymore. Um. The idea was like a color palette type situation for new development of commercial areas.
Development.
Yeah, but I, but that kind of goes along the lines of, um, yeah, which we can't do.
It's either that or it's a, it's a significant, yeah, there's a practical difficulty if I recall correctly, the state kind of clamped down on it, made it very difficult to do that.
Um, and then there's this, um, which I know there's, there's a lot of mixed feelings on this one. Uh, some strong on either end, but this definitely came out of the fifth AV review committee. You know, people are upset and you see it on Nextdoor all the time. They complain about, you know, certain sections of fifth AV. Nothing's blighted, but you know, not looking as nice as it, you know, could. Um. Yeah. My, you know, just from a, a realistic perspective on this, you know, this is kind of the world I live in with doing real estate law and such. Um, you know, a property owner, you know, who's a commercial landlord. I mean, they're in it for business, right, and for money. So they're, they have no incentive to spruce it up or do anything unless it's going to affect their bottom line and make them money, right? And some of the issues with these areas that don't look so nice is that in reality, they need to be redeveloped. And somebody's not going to come by a strip center just to redevelop it into another strip center here when you could just keep patching it. So the way to create, in my view, the motivation, um, and the incentive is. And before I say it, people forget, but you can do it appropriately. Is for allowing very, very limited mixed use zoning in very certain small sections. So like the idea would be say Shannon and East to A1A, or yeah, to A1A. You know, allowing mixed use to where you'd have retail down on the first floor and then at most, you know, two residential's above. My idea also for this, because you know, parking would be an issue, is that the way that. Because this is, this would have to be a whole new separate zoning district, so say like C3. Um, we have to be very strict about it being, you know, a particular area. Um, but that the developer comes in, they would have to essentially purchase, you know, from. Fifth to sixth. So that, because parking, so say if we had three stories, you would require on this, on the backside. Like a two-story lot, parking garage, so you could have parking down below, second parking for residents above. And that parking would be hidden from the street view by the third, right? So if we limited, and here's what we would do, right, you would, um. Because this is what we can control zoning wise, you would require that these units be large places, right? So it's then going to encourage that they are high-end places, so it's low density. So doing it right, it still fits within our comprehensive plan and these ideas about, you know, uh, low-density residential. But with commercial that is catered and designed, you know, for the residential aspects and the residents of the town. I know this is a very touchy concerning area because people immediately, which I, I don't fault, because trust me, I don't want this either. Uh, but they immediately start thinking, oh, no, it's going to become Fort Lauderdale and you're going to have these big high rises. Right. Um, I, see, the way I see it, you know, I grew up in Saddle Lake Beach, I grew up here, you know, um, so trust me, I have the same feelings for wanting to maintain a certain quality. Um, but as we know, change is not only coming, it's here, right? Every day, and I think this is the type of situation, we get out ahead of it and we do it right and like balance, balance is the most important thing, so. Uh, it can spruce it up, we can actually kind of have a little bit of a commercial like area where you walk and have outdoor dining. Um, and but with it, in order to get that, there's going to have to be a little bit of residential above. Um, I honestly think it would, that will make it look cool and kind of give it a, a cool vibe down there. But again, we'd have to be very strict about how we approach it from a zoning standpoint to ensure that it's low density. High, uh, you know, qual, yeah.
High value.
Yeah, value, exactly. Just a thought.
What else?
Uh, that's, that is, uh, I think we're good on event fees and stuff. We've already increased them a bunch.
Right. Yeah, we're current, we're current on that.
Yeah. Um. Then there's, I gotta get with somebody, there's a consultant in town, I couldn't catch up with her beforehand, who does development stuff, and she said she had some opinions on, um. Kind of, I guess correcting s- s- certain nuanced, uh, things in our development aspect of our code that I think she just, it was kind of like with the townhouse. That we did the plating, that just don't make sense and would be easier streamlined.
Proceeding more procedural.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, uh, have that on me right now. And then, um, uh. Let me see here, oh. This is just a random idea, but of my own. Um. I think it's called Riverside Park or River. People debate whether or not there's a name, but I think there is. It's at the end of Orlando.
Oh, it's. No official name for that.
What's the name of it, Joe?
Ernest Cohen Hoven Riverside Park.
No, no.
So on Orlando, out of Orlando.
Orlando Boulevard?
Yeah.
Oh, um.
Where outfall is there.
Hang on, oh crap. Bill Dewey Park.
Say that again? Riverby, right? River.
At the end of Orlando with the river.
Indian, hang on, Indian River. We call it Dead End Park, but it's not Dead End Park.
I like that.
Indian River Park, I think it is.
Yeah, I think it's similar.
Indian River, sorry.
Um. Which I believe, yeah, 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 Indian River Park, you're right, yeah. At least that's what Google says. Um. I didn't know if maybe, because I mean, a lot, I think a lot of townspeople enjoy cruising up there, watching the sunset. Um, you know, we currently have a bench. I didn't know, uh, if people would be interested in to the extent that we are able to. Um, not only spruce it up, but kind of have more of a, like a formal water access point there. Um, so that you want to go paddle boarding or kayaking, you're not worried about gashing up your leg.
Well, the problem there is we have an outfall right there.
Yeah, the, the.
So the outfall kind of takes that whole area where the beach.
Right, it's to the right. To the left is kind of like people just doing it on their own and almost like created a little bit of a path. I would have to see, or I guess we all would have to see a survey to see if we have the ability to, but if we do have the room, I think that would be something cool that people would appreciate. It's a little sketchy right now, um, as far as potentially like slicing your foot open, but.
Just makes it tougher.
Kookina or some sand out there, you know, whatever, that was like.
Have one of those in Melbourne Beach. Similar, which went over to one of the, you can walk out there, right, yeah.
Yeah.
We can figure that out.
It's not a code provision, it's just more of an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We are putting in kayaks down at Riverside Park.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's the end of your list?
Uh, then there was something about peddlers and solicitors that Stu had brought up. I just don't have.
We already, don't we already have?
Did, it wasn't as good as the state statute or something that he wanted to deal with. Oh yeah, that's what it was.
We have rules on the books for that, right, Chief?
But it was.
There's a state statute and county code that, that cover that.
And we can enforce whichever one is the most appropriate.
So we can, yeah, we can enforce it. There's certain things like they have to have photo, a government issued ID card. They have to have business cards, they have to have a three-day right of rescission, they have to, I mean, there's, there's a whole list of, of things that. And we've put out training on it, we've put out memorandums on it and things, so. We, we, we get compliance, we just kind of shoo them along, usually to Melbourne Beach.
All right.
Um. That's me, or that's it for me.
All right, so now we can.
I had a couple of ones as well that I.
Okay.
Um. Parking. Throughout the different zones, it's inconsistent as a minimum. And just in terms of the allocations of ratios of seats. Um, and there are also alternatives in how we want to specify it to be more consistent with. How the town is being used. As noted broadly speaking, there are many, uh, many businesses, some restaurants, some shops, others that are not in compliance with the code that's written. So we need to fix that. I don't, um, I think, sir, that's, that starts with a review of the, of the parking ordinances across all the different zones. Not including the R zones, I don't think that's impacted by it, but we'll just say.
See, you just reminded me, I didn't bring up the professional district. We know that's an issue.
That's the next on the next on my list, thanks too. So I think parking, generally speaking, we need to address it. There's multiple ways to do it. Um, there are many businesses that are not in compliance, as you, if you strictly apply it, there's different nuances in how you do it. There are many different applications out there on how it can be done creatively. So there's options within our toolkit to address it.
Okay. What else?
Permitted uses in the RP zone. Um. Obviously, that's a topic of, a topic of debate, so.
All right.
Just to be more specific.
And, and I think it's not just the permitted uses, it's, um, the area. Uh, because I guess in our commercial, um. Zones, it specifically says that something along the lines of like there not being outdoor activity. Um, so. I don't know if that's appropriate for a commercial, but it might be appropriate for professionals, so.
Right, right. I mean, you could broadly say that a review of the commercial RP and even.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Others for permitted uses is appropriate given current, and we have language in there for folks that love to read the code. There's language in there about teen rave clubs from, I guess this was a problem back in the eighties and nineties that they're prohibited juice. We had to add code to the, to the, or add a permitted use of a tattoo parlor to the code. Ten, fifteen years ago, because there's, uh, there was an artist that wanted to open a tattoo shop. I forget if they're even, if they're even there now, but.
Yeah, they're still there.
Yeah, so there's, but a permitted use is a dance club, where if you're going to go do ballroom dancing, that's okay, but not rave dancing, so. We have some. But.
That's a violation of my freedom of expression.
Oh, well, you know.
Yeah, that's constitutional issue.
Do it on your own time. Um. I actually had permitted uses as a point of topic, just as a discussion point, you did a much better job, at least in terms of at least bringing up something we want to talk about.
Yeah.
I mean, those were right, some other ideas, but I don't think most of them are not worth bringing.
Do y'all have anything?
We seem to have some significant controversy over parking right now, so I think I would suggest that it be our priority is, is revamping, reworking the ordinance. And I'd kind of like to suggest that maybe we just put a stay on any violations until we can properly and thoughtfully. Put a good plan into place, like a moratorium, if you will. I would suggest that.
So, um, are, are we ready to prioritize what we have beyond parking?
The only thing I wanted to bring up, because I do think, is there consideration for home business ordinances for, um, home, um, in section two, three, five? With, with regards to if you have somebody working from their house as a hairstylist, uh, so on and so forth. There are, I don't know if that's a current issue. I know at one point during COVID, the governor and the state made some moves to. It never really came to fruition to basically override any limit, any restrictions on home, you know, use of your home as a business place such that you could do whatever the hell, hell you wanted. Um, but.
Okay.
Again, I, I think it's a prob, probably a low priority, it's not a problem that we're currently experiencing, but I just want to put it out there.
All right. Um, John, did you have anything? Okay, so it seems special, or the procurement policy is easy, let's just do it.
Yep, I agree.
Pool fence is easy?
Do it.
Yep.
Uh, parking is the hot topic?
That'll require more nuance, yeah.
Right. Um. And then, uh.
Outdoor cafe is.
The outdoor beach cafe.
Yeah, outdoor cafe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're not discussing eighty, you know, getting rid of it or keeping it.
Put that on the, in the top of it.
Yeah, let's put that on, on a high on the priority list because.
Okay.
I personally think, I, I've read this, it looks really good, it sets very good parameters. If a business owner or property owner wants to open an outdoor cafe, it has all the parameters here. So if we, if we get rid of it, this is my thought, if we get rid of it and somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to open an outdoor cafe, we have nothing.
Right.
We're just going to prohibit outdoor cafes, is that what we're saying? Or are we going to go with the.
Well, we're not talking about getting rid of or keeping them, we're just putting it on the list.
I thought we were talking about getting rid of it, but I want it on the priority list to discuss.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm big on the formula business. Uh, coming up with something for that. Molly, are you, you're taking notes, right? Okay, good. Uh. And. We already said parking, right? As a top, okay. And the mixed use, I think, is. Worth looking at.
Yeah.
I would move that down the list in terms of a priority, just because it's not a prop, a near-term problem that we were trying to resolve in terms of the, the issues we're dealing with.
What are the other?
Other than when you get a new resident who moves in every like two to three months and they're like, hop on Nextdoor and like. What is wrong with this? This has to happen. It could be so cool.
I, I understand, but I, there's other things I think we need to, as a priority, that's me, that's medium high.
So what's your priority, Doug?
Um. Um, I think we kind of hit on them already, the setbacks, the fences, the cafes, the signs was another one that you brought up for a fluke. That, that should be pretty strict. And then if we want to tackle, um, some of the other ones, I think they're medium priority. I don't think they're, they're not issues that occur very often, and so I think.
So we have a list for now, we want to work on.
I would, if we can get Molly to publish the full list and then just say, these are the ones we're tabling, these are the ones we're putting as low priority, medium priority, and these are the ones we want to address, and then that gives us a chance to at least.
So you want me to give you the list of what we discussed tonight? You want the list of what you discussed tonight and then y'all will rearrange the priority and we'll discuss it another meeting?
No, I would, I would say that we, in the, in the order that we just described.
Okay.
Hopefully. Um, high, medium, and low, and everything, anything that we didn't talk about goes in the low category. And if we want to, if we want to modify the list, we can. High, medium, and low, and everything that we didn't talk about goes in the low category, and if we want to, if we want to modify the list, we can. And we can do that as part of just the next council meeting.
Right.
Just as the, as a quick five minute discussion.
Thank you, Brett, you did a great job.
Thank you. I mean, some of them too, we know, like, we can just start trying to work on language, where others, it's like, we have to have.
Right.
Policy discussion.
Right, right. All right, I'm going to call a five minute break. All right, so this meeting is adjourned, we'll do public comment in route, this is at the beginning of the next meeting. All right, we'll call the meeting to order, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. All right, good evening, everybody, thank you. It is, all right, there we go. Changes to the agenda, we're going to switch the Melbourne Regional Chamber of Commerce to first, and then we'll do Drown Zero second, and then Parks and Rec third. Anybody else have any changes?
Nothing.
All right, let's see, Melbourne Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yes. Yep, yeah, face off, state your name, and you can give your business address if you want.
Sorry, this is odd for me not to face the crowd and not. Good afternoon, good evening, my name is Chelsea Lince with the Melbourne Regional Chamber of Commerce, and I am their new director of business development. And I was invited here this evening, thank you so much for inviting me, but to share kind of a little bit of the benefits of the Melbourne Regional Chamber, and what chambers of commerce actually do. Excuse me. So the purpose of chambers of commerce for anybody who's ever been involved or owns a business, or, you know, is part of, part of the community, is we are really here to help businesses, large and small, and communities kind of come together. So at the end of the day, we really are trying to benefit everybody as a whole. Whether you are a business owner, or you're just trying to work in the community. So, I'm so sorry. So really, the purpose of kind of what we try to do is serve everybody and all of the community. And so all of the towns that are part of our community are such a huge part of that. So we have a lot of our dignitaries, local and foreign wide, that come and join our, our events. So that's super important, that the community sees the backing of the towns that participate. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or.
Do you have any questions in council?
Um, just some of, just, I'll let the town staff, council, excuse me, and the constituents know. Some of the ways that we can participate and use the chamber to help, you know, achieve some of the goals of the town, both for the, the actual administration of the town, as well as for the, the local businesses.
Definitely, one of the ways that is a huge participation is joining a lot of our, our local events. So in the past two months that I've recently been with the chamber as a new staff member, is we have new business partners that are all up and down this area, and, and the, in the Atlantic, actually, that we do ribbon cutting events. So to show that support, it would be amazing for them to see that their own local community and town council members support them as a new business as well. And so that would be great to have that FaceTime with them. We just had a ribbon cutting last night in Melbourne for the new runway rooftop. And we had our chief of police there, and Melbourne members of the council, as well as the mayor. So those are just a few ways to get more involved, as well as our monthly events as well.
Cool. Anything else?
They do certain lobbying efforts where, you know, like fly up to Tallahassee together, you know, pursuing certain initiatives.
Definitely, yes, business advocacy is a huge aspect of what the chamber does as well. Our president and CEO, Anne Conroy Bader, just went to DC, and is helping advocate for our local communities and businesses, and what is important to them. And that is the greatest part about the chamber too, is that we are a voice, because we have that impact on a higher level.
Along with the Space Coast League of Cities, which gives us the administrative side of advocacy, this would help us amplify our voice from a business perspective within the state and even national, apparently.
Yes, yeah, I know, and I personally went on our trip a few weeks before the DC trip to Tallahassee, where we got a ton of our, our local mayors and council members and congresspeople and senators that met us there. And they spoke to just our, all of our four chambers within the county, and spoke to us about what they are doing on a wider level for advocacy for our county. And so that was super special, and that's even more of a reason for every small town within our county to get involved. So you guys can express your needs and your voice of all of your constituents.
Cool, thank you.
We're also, we are also members, we just joined a couple months ago.
Cool. All right. Anything else?
Nope, we're good.
All right, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much for having me.
And you don't have to stick around, you can, you can bounce if you want. Uh, all right, drown zero.
Good evening, council members, mayor, staff. This is Michelle from the Indian Atlantic Rotary Club, and I am Wyatt, Michelle Tracy Wyatt Werneth. And we're here again. Glad to be here, you know, being in front of you is a chance, and I appreciate it. New faces on the, on the council here, right? So maybe we should tell you about what Drown Zero is, if you don't know. Drown Zero is, we take, this is a replica, not of size. We take these and we put them on the beach, and we have them all the way now from Sebastian Inlet to Cape Canaveral's Jettie Park. I'm a former lifeguard, and my experience in lifeguarding was, there's not enough lifeguards for 210 beach accesses in Bovard County. So after I retired and dealing with far too many fatalities, watched them continue even since I retired, I came up with an idea that spiraled from boats and pools. Let's put a ring on the beach and make it available to people who have the ability and wherewithal and the nonstop Good Samaritan mentality to help people. Because what's been happening too many times is Good Samaritans, family members, go into the water to save one of their own, or a stranger, and they die doing it. So it's been proven flotation saves lives, drownings can be prevented. We had lifeguards, it'd be the number one thing, your chance of drowning in front of a lifeguard is one in 18 million. But having a flotation device increases your odds. A abstract study based on a lot of interesting, I would say, concern, because people were thinking that maybe we're encouraging people to go out into harm's way and possibly put them in a situation they wouldn't, if they see something like this. My abstract study took about two years, I researched the entire United States, and not once could I find a case where John Smith drowned with a flotation device trying to save someone. Thousands upon thousands of drowning, someone trying to rescue someone. So I think we're making a difference, and I know this, some of our data that we've been collecting, we've been. We started out in Cocoa Beach, we started out with forty-one stations in Cocoa Beach, we now have two hundred in Bovard County. We have a hundred and twenty going into Vero Beach. We're in Hernando County, and we're in Flagler Beach. So we're expanding and we're making a difference. In Cocoa Beach alone, two hundred and forty-five rings were utilized. When I say rings, sometimes, multiple times, because there's a bad rip current there. No lifeguard, either the lifeguards are off duty, because we only have lifeguards from ten o'clock until five o'clock, and a lot of the rescues were taking place by, by Good Samaritans before or even after. So we've documented two hundred and forty plus just in last year. And I'll tell you what, we, we just came on board with the county one year. And prior to us coming on board with the county, throughout the county, except for Cocoa Beach area, we had fourteen drownings the year before in 2023. When we installed them in the county parks in 2024, we helped reduce it to two drownings that year. And those two drownings were down south in the Melbourne Beach, and those, we call them fisherman cuts. Not anywhere that we had a rescue ring or there was a lifeguard. Now, again, the, the things that have helped is, is lifeguards had a real reality check when there was all that stuff, so the lifecars updated. And then we had these, these rings out there, so force multiplier, only two drownings. And to date, we have one drowning that I know of on record, that's not, it happened in the ocean, was it out right off here somewhere? Do you guys hear about that one? We don't know that, I don't know all the details about that, but I am, I've been insured that it wasn't anything that a lifeguard present or the rings or anyone could have done, because it was so far offshore. It's still mysterious. Do you, are you guys aware of the incident last weekend?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
That's.
I'd say our town manager forwarded it to, to us.
At that, see, you know, I tell you, this has been, after being retired, a full-time job, and many a times I want to jump off a bridge, but whenever someone gets rescued like this, I'm back in it, you know, I'm like, I can't stop, I'm cursed. So, I mean, I guess the rest of my life, I'm destined to at least be some part of water rescue and safety. And that's why we're here in front of you guys today, is, right now, you guys are the, the only city that doesn't have the drown zero system. As you may know, we don't want it to ever be a burden to the community, the city, or your budgets, or to interfere with getting more lifeguards, we want that. We give them to you for free. And then that's why Michelle Tracy's here, is because Rotary Clubs are successful as stewards, and they go up and they check on them, they make sure they're maintained. We have a, a mission plan or a business plan where we go out and check them every day. That's how we found out about the two forty-five that we had in Cocoa Beach, is our guys, our volunteers go out and. We have three ways that we recognize that they've been utilized. We have a tamper seal that's much like a fire extinguisher. When that tamper seal's popped, we log that as a possible use. One is if it's laying on the ground wet and sandy, and then someone has witnessed it, and they will tell us. I'm going to roll up and have someone wave me down and say, hey, the ring just got used, people are leaving. And I run up and I don't get to talk to them, whatever. But then the third way is the most profound and indefinite, is nine one one was called, like in the one that we just had here, and we documented. And, and to let you guys know too, with technology, a, a, as we advance, we're coming up with smart stations. We have twenty-one smart stations in Bovard County right now, and what they do is when the ring is pulled, it calls nine one one direct. And, and it'll alert surrounding lifeguards immediately, just like the ADT or something that's at, at your home, it's dialed into a special system, it's kind of done by a phone, but the stand itself has the technology to make that phone call. It even has an audible that says that there's a drowning at this locate, or someone in distress at this location with a GPS pinpoint, as well as if that ring gets moved and utilized, we track the ring. And, and what's really neat about it, it's all done on the app as well. Your city officials, your EM, your public safety can all have it, like we do in Melbourne Beach. When that alert goes off, they get a text even before the, the nine one one's called. So they're already alerted to it. So we're, we're hoping to, you know, bring this to your community, and, and just do good, and, and see what we can do to be a force multiplier for the lifecars that you do have, and, and take it from there. Thank you.
Have any question?
And Satellite Beach and Indian Harbor Beach Public City Works work well with us, so actually when, I don't know, we could do it, but they, when hurricanes come, they actually take the, the sign, the ring off and the top of the sign, they have theirs hooked on the boardwalks. So if you want to collaborate with Satellite Beach, Indian Harbor, that would probably be a good, so you all can do it kind of on the same page.
Any questions? No, Mr. Yarley, later. Okay, yeah, yeah. Do y'all have any questions?
I just have one remark, we're fortunate tonight, because our fire chief and our captain and, and a couple of our esteemed fighters are here. So I'd like to hear what they have to say. Not to put you on the spot, but I just did.
Yeah, so I mean, the system's being used all over Bovard County, up coast here. I see it as an extra tool for us, I don't know about the liability side, that's something that you guys would have to delve into on your own, but I see it as an extra tool for us to be able to use. We're not there, and the lifeguards, like he'd said, Wyatt had said, they, they leave at five o'clock, so, and, and ends in at night, different times, so. For us, it would be a beneficial thing if that was the case, but again, it's a liability thing, if it's a liability thing, then that's outside of my realm. That decision itself, but if it's there, and we don't, there's a monitoring system, like he said, that you can hook up to, we'd have to talk to Connor about that too, because we would both get that system if we have it monitored, go off like a mechanical alarm or a monitoring system. So that's something, if it tweaks a little bit, we get false calls, we might have to adjust that. But it's a free system, the Rotary Club provides. They have some advertising they do on the very top to kind of pay for the, the system itself for the monitoring side of it, so it wouldn't be no cost to us, it's just a matter of having the extra tool, and I don't know how many you would want to put along our beach, do you have an idea at all, have you mapped it out and looked at?
I'll have to throw that back to you guys and tell me what accesses you have.
Yeah, so we, I guess it would depend on how many accesses we want to monitor, how many you want to have along the boardwalk, or the different beach accesses that we have, so I'm not sure if there's a number you've looked at, or Joe, or. So it could be between five and eight, or less than that, or.
We're prepared to give you as many as you guys need.
Yeah, so it would be a free system regardless, so we can have it monitored, we can not have it monitored. I know that we do advertising on it, sometimes they don't, I know alone, Patrick Air Force, they don't advertise, but.
Yeah, we, we're good at getting sponsorships, that's what the Rotary Club is, yes.
So.
May have one of the audience.
Indian Harbor Satellite Beach right now, there might be like six that aren't sponsored, but. But it gives us enough money from the other ones if something happens to maintain the station.
So I think it's a positive thing, but again, it'd be up to you guys to make that decision based on liability, I think that nature.
Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, with the size one way or the other, we'd also have to enter an agreement with them. I think you've done it with other cities and municipalities.
Well, I have one of the county, we do carry a liability insurance on, you know, that's on board, has no liability issues, so I don't know.
You want to put it on the agenda for next month, and then we can discuss and vote?
Yep.
Hmm?
We can do it tonight.
We'll do it next month.
Yeah, we can have a copy of the agreement to look.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
Cool, yeah, we'll talk about it next month, vote next month. Do you guys have any questions?
I don't have, for, for the presenters, thank you for coming out tonight. But for Christine though, I know we had asked the same question a year ago from, from Paul or so, and, and that's where we left it, and I talked to Mr. Casey, I believe that the, the recommendation from legal was that because of our, I'm not going to remember the right word, because of, because we're, we're indemnifying because of our.
Sovereign.
Sovereign immunity, there you go, that's the word I'm looking for. That, that was essentially the feedback, from the liability concerns that we originally had.
Okay.
I believe that was the case, and that would be the question for you to research.
Yeah, part of what we need to look at is, obviously, they're indicating that they maintain some sort of liability insurance too, that might identify the town. I did not have my mind on, sorry, folks.
So yeah, we can take a look at any proposed contract or insurance that is modeled by other existing communities that are currently using this.
I don't think any, yeah, you have it now. Satellite Beach and Indian Harbor, we didn't have anything like that, he just said yes, but he has it now, so.
Yeah, we, of course, even the Rotary Club or any Order five one C three, in order to do any kind of volunteer work, you have to have an extensive liability, because we have that. We'll give you a copy, and in fact, to go a step further, we put you on as a, an addition for that for Sebastian, and get that for the county.
Yeah, so Mike, if you want to reach out to Satellite and kind of get their.
Well, how about I work with Wyatt?
Wyatt, there you go, perfect.
And to get what they have with the county and stuff like that, and Satellite Beach or whatever, anybody else has anything? He said it's already in existence with the county.
Just thinking that we can come for, we can come with those answers for next council as opposed to.
Yeah, I think we put up, what, next council meeting, we, we work on how many stations we would need with you and stuff, I'll go with the fire chief and the public works director and things.
If it wants to be monitored or not, things, different things that we might take a look at.
Yeah.
Now, I spoke with the Mel Beach Fire Chief, why I put a system in down there, initially when they had to monitor, they had a few little tweaks where it was going off malfunction.
In the smart stations, the electronics were, we were in the beta stage.
Beta stage, yeah, yeah.
But he said after a couple days, they knocked that down, so it was pretty.
With phases.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it ended up being good, once they worked the bugs out of it, so might be something we can look at as well, you guys have a decision.
We can have it on next month's council agenda, and then, like I said, we'll work, get, we'll do a staff thing together, and we'll get together with you Wyatt, or I'll have the chief reach out to you. And maybe even main, big conversation by phone or something like that, information, so we can have it for the next month's meeting. May fourteenth.
Yep. Thank you, thank you. All right, Sarah, we have the Parks and Recreation Beautification Sunrise Park presentation. For a little context, this is put together by the Parks and Rec Committee as a concept, and we'll decide at some other point if we're moving forward at some.
Hello, everybody, I'm Sarah Horschel, 107 Watson Drive. I've been a resident in Indian Atlantic for over twenty years. Within that time, I've been involved in our community, and I've served on the Park and Rec Committee for what I think to be eight years. My main intentions when joining the committee were to beautify the fifth Ave median, help grow our committee's three annual events that we put on, which are the Witchwood Five K, the tree lighting, and the Easter egg hunt, which is this Saturday at nine AM Orlando Park. And lastly, to move Sunrise Park. Just to give you, I'm going to give you a little bit of background about how this all came about, and then we have the architect here and some other people. And then we have the architect here and some other people that could speak about funding. So each member of the Park and Rec Committee is assigned to a park to help overlook and make suggestions and improvements and report safety issues. When joining the committee, I was assigned to Sunrise Park. A lot of, I have a lot of passion for this park and I see the potential to make use of the space for the community to enjoy. Sunrise Park is an exercise park and it's patently, which makes it a unique and special to our town. The park currently has a handful of older and worn exercise stations and a large grassy area that's filled with weeds and prickers, making it unusable. Over the past several years, I've worked with the town works, or I'm sorry, the town and public works to fix the irrigation, to improve the condition of the grass. But unfortunately, it's been a battle that hasn't been resolved, still making the grassy area in the middle unusable space. With that being said, the Park and Rec Committee and myself have spent a lot of time getting input through our community on how to better improve Sunrise Park and make it a place that serves the wants of our community. Our town manager advised us that the first step to action is to create a site plan to present to the town council for approval, then pushing it through the county for approval. And that's what brings me here this evening. We've been working with an architect that has helped us create a beautiful concept. Underground systems and setbacks have been applied. The design is strategically laid out. So looking at the design, if you look at the legend, it's pretty self-explanatory. But what we're looking for here, we're proposing to add additional fitness pads around the interior grassy area, as well as a yoga yard and a fenced dog run. On the exterior east side of the sidewalk, adding a basketball shooting pad. All the palm trees surrounding the park will remain with the addition of new landscape and turf in the interior areas. The park hours, as well as the permit parking, will remain the same. We're simply just trying to create a more useful park for our community to enjoy. So I'm here to asking, asking the council to make a motion that you support this so we can move forward. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the funding, just so you have a better understanding. This is all the first part of the process. This is what we were told needs to be done first. So for funding, we would be looking for local businesses to support different stations of the park. The dog run area, we would do similar to what is at Nance Park with the pickets and selling the pickets. And you can put your dog's name on it or in memory of, or whatever they want to put on it. We are a very tight-knit community and we have a lot of people that are supporting this. So there's a lot of families that have interest in the project and would donate. The Witchway 5K, which I've been involved with heavily for the past eight years and have got a ton of donations for, we would do the profits going towards the Sunrise Park. You can, we can get grants. And then also an idea is to put a sign in the park with a QR code that people could scan. And then it takes you to a page where you can learn about the donations.
Thank you. Questions?
Do you have a ballpark idea of what the cost is?
So our architect may have a better idea, but we did, we're in contact with a couple of companies. So the main thing would be with the fitness pads, depending what we do in those areas. So we have been in touch with two different companies, getting different quotes. So I don't want to put a number out there. I'm not sure if she will. No, she's shaking her head now.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
But honestly, thank you. Thank you. If we could pass it, I just, I know this community and I know who supports it. And I'm not, I'm not worried about that part.
Okay.
John, question?
No.
Brett.
I love the idea. I fully support anything to improve our parks and create more reasons for everyone to come out together as a community. And job well done, you know, you went the safe route. You didn't put pickleball in there. That would have been an immediate torpedo to end it. But I'm just wondering, do you need our approval, I'm fully for, for us to make a motion and such, for the purpose so that you can then get bids? Is that what the idea is?
We need to go to our county ass.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, okay. And so without us.
Let me kind of answer a couple of questions. A, they have to, you're all approved to kind of move forward, then look for funding. And I mean, even with Witchway 5K, you're bringing about like $10,000 in profits a year. So that's not going to pay. I'm guestimating. I'm not an expert. And I actually just showed this question earlier today. And we kind of were about the same number, about 300 to 350,000. That's just a conservative kind of thing, looking at stuff. So we'd have to figure out the funding for that. And then you've got the designers who are kind of shovel-ready. That's what they, that's what we're going to do. And it'd be up to you all to choose what features you're going to have there. And then we'd also have to, we lease that property, just like Nance Park, when we did with the Mikey Goodwin thing. We have to work with the county, Bovard County, just to communicate back and forth with them to get their kind of a stamp of approval. The Parks and Rec.
So appreciate the initiative, specifically concerned with regards to the basketball court. Just, I know there's concerns from residents adjacent to the park, you know, is that the right location for it? That's probably a big upper in terms of some of the scope, in terms of the cost. My other concern is with, we also have significant projects to repair and replace in the enterprise zone. That's Nance Park and the boardwalk. And so we just have to be cautious with, and I recognize you're advocating to raise funds outside of the normal budgetary cycles.
And that park is budgeted by enterprise too.
What, sorry?
That park is budgeted by enterprise. So that's why, we're already looking at other projects. So we, it's kind of.
So that's, that's my concern, is I don't want to still lose focus on the things that we already have that we need to maintain.
Right.
Versus expanding that, recognizing that maybe there's a phased approach with some of the, some of the implementations.
But isn't this maintaining kind of what we have down there now? Because if you've been in that park lately, it's looking a little shabby.
So I don't disagree with the upkeep of some of the existing features, but we're also talking about adding a substantial amount of additional scope. But to your point, yeah, so that I know that the roof is off the platform is a minimum, that the exercise equipment is, you know, it's by the sea. And even if it hasn't been there long, it's going to be wear and tear.
Frankly, I get a little frustrated sometimes sitting up here when we have these great ideas come and they just get shot down. So I'm just telling you, I think this looks awesome.
And just to clarify, I mean, right now, we're just at a conceptual phase. We're not saying this is what it's going to be.
100%.
We're really just saying we're on board with exploring the opportunities, the possibilities, and trying to move forward. And I have full faith, as we did with Nance Park, that the town will, yeah, exactly. We will raise the funds. We will find the funds.
I just want to, I just want to be, and I don't disagree with improving. And I'm, I'm not, I appreciate the effort in bringing it forward because you're going to take some arrows from the community regardless of whether, whatever it is, because it's never, it's never, everybody likes everything. And I don't disagree with you, John. And I'm not trying to shoot it down. All I'm trying to do is frame it in a context. Because of what we're looking at tonight, isn't what we're asking to be approved. This is not what, what we would be proposing. Because there's a perception and there is a reality. And a lot of times, it will get legs. And this will be now become the baseline. And this will be the establishment. This is what we're going to go do. And that is not what I want us to be proposing. And I want us to be proposing, as a community, as a council, a project that fits within the overall, all the projects on the beach side and how we fund it. I agree, we've done a great, we did a great job at the Mikey Goodwin Park. If anybody remembers the playground equipment before, before, how bad it was, and you look at it now, it's light years. So it's, you know, what is possible through the community work of this town is amazing. So we can achieve these, you know, whatever it is we decide we want to achieve. But I just want to caution to not, not have folks fixate on this specific implementation because I do have concerns that if we do go forward, that we don't use this as a baseline. We use it as an inspiration.
So in other words, for everyone out there in internet land and on Nextdoor, this is a conceptual drawing. This is not what we have approved. That's it.
So Mike, what do, I guess, what do we need to approve to move forward?
I mean, basically, the, you know, the idea of making improvements there is something you're interested in and authorize them to kind of move forward with this. And we'd have to get the fund. The big thing is the funding. We don't have anything in the budget.
Right.
We're not, and we have no enterprise money. We don't have enough already. That's why there's no, to be honest, why there's no roof back on that thing is because we don't have the money to put the roof on. We could either take in the whole thing out or just on the one. So just moving forward and doing with, you know, basically letting us work with the Parks and Rec and trying to figure out something. And maybe their next step would be working on funding.
We have lobbyists.
And the final plan, we'll come back to you all, because it may not be the same thing. And I know there's been, we've gotten some emails from the condos around there against some of these things.
Right. So we can move forward without committing to this, even though.
Yeah. Can you explore the options?
Okay.
How's that?
So it'd be, what do you want to say, Doug?
But I mean, I don't, do we have to take a vote to continue exploring options? I just, I don't see that.
If it gets consensus of the council, I think that would give me.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, fair enough. Yes. I mean, I don't, because if we vote on it, that means it indicates an approval of a specific plan as opposed to consensus.
No, it's the motion.
Fair enough. I'm just being cautious.
Yeah.
I move to authorize or have the Parks and Rec Committee work with staff to begin exploring, you know, taking the further steps down the road for improving Sunrise Park with this being a conceptual design. And, you know, first and foremost, let's be concerned with lining up the funding. But essentially, move to take the next steps to move forward. That's it.
I second.
All right. Sarah, did you have anything to add?
I don't think so.
There'd be town comments.
Okay, we'll move on to town, town comments or public comments, sorry. Let's see, are these all Sunrise? Okay, so we'll go off of names. We got more. All right, how about Phyllis, Phyllis? Word, okay. Name and address, please.
Phyllis Swirzel, 735 North Highway A1A, Indy Atlantic, the Topaz Oceanfront condominium. I'm the vice president. And in the conception that, that we have seen, a lot of our residents are worried about, and specifically the basketball court. Because of the constant pounding of the ball, the late hours that it might bring people to play. And that, that's the biggest objection that I've been hearing. And it will take away, our condominium is facing, they're, one half of the building, they're, or I guess a third, their balconies are right on the park, overlooking the park. We take care of the dunes for the park because nobody's been maintaining them. So we do. We pay for that. We also have taken care of the, the palm trees because they're not booted. They're not, nothing's, nothing's ever done with the booting of the trees. And the palm trees aren't being taken care of. But when our residents sit on their balconies, they would like to have a nice view of the ocean. And so we, we try to accommodate them with that. We pay for it, not the city, not the town. And the basketball, the constant banging of the ball on the, on the pavement will be a big distraction. And that's what I've heard most of all from our residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yarley.
I'm Yarley 501 North Miramar, Indy Atlantic. First of all, I'd like to become a proud sponsor to the Zero Drown lives at the Blue Beach Resort and be the first to install this. I've always been advocate for life safety. And it speaks for itself. It means a lot.
Thank you.
It's very meaningful. And second of all, I support the Sunrise Park. I really don't understand why sports, you know, basketball really affects somebody's lifestyle. I just don't understand it. It's healthy. It's better than doing drugs, drinking beers and whatever. I mean, I think it's time the town needs to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Baumann?
Mike Baumann, 601 North Miramar, apartment 202. We specifically bought in that unit for the view, for, to see the ocean. We do pay for cutting down the, and keeping the sea greeps kind of trimmed. The diagram showed that there were 17 feet, so that would completely destroy the view. The basketball court, we're completely in agreement with some of the other speakers and some of the complaints because we would hear that from our balcony constantly. And it's, it's exercise, but I really don't see that, for that park, it's a beautiful park. I do think that some of the upgrades need to be done because it does get weathered. The wind and the sea and everything affect it. But it does need to be taken care of, but paved over everything. The green space is wonderful. Everybody wants to pretty much construct on every blue property anymore. Things going up every place. Let's go ahead and just keep something. We can improve it a bit. Basketball court, put it in Nance Park where it's not in between two condos. Put it someplace else. And then the parking issue also, where are the people going to park? How many more people are going to be brought in here? We already see people, at least four cars every day, that use it as temporary or as permanent parking, pretty much for employee parking. They park there and then they walk down. We see them every single day from our apartment and they walk to one of the businesses. So they use that as parking. So is it going to get more and more, will the city commit to putting a light in there? Because that's getting very dangerous to be an intersection. As far as fencing in the dog, that whole dog park area, we see so many people go in there with animals and have a great time. It's just a beautiful little park. And I'd hate to see, in kind of the name of the old song that was out there, you know, they paved over paradise to put up a parking lot. That's kind of what I feel is going to happen here. Put up a basketball court. There are a couple already within walking distance. And if you have to have a basketball court, go ahead and put it in Nance Park where it's not going to bother anybody else. Liability's a problem perhaps. You guys were talking about that just a little bit ago. What if somebody hurts themselves? And you know, basically, we see the, it's a usable open area. And doing all of this, you're going to be putting in all sorts of pads and fenced-in areas and cut down the walking area. And I just don't see it being as usable for the, for the people that love going there with pets. And I say that as a non-pet owner. We do not have a pet. And I don't have any problem with that. And I like to see people enjoy it. So I'm really, I'm totally for making improvements on it, replacing the things that need to be replaced. But I'm not for putting in basketball court and really fencing everything in and constraining everything. So just my feeling.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Rain Best.
Yes, hi. My name is Lorraine Best. I live at 601 North Miramar Avenue 310. And I look directly over Sunrise Park. I do definitely not want a basketball court in that park. My taxes are sky high. And I don't pay sky-high taxes to sit and watch and hear a basketball court going through the night, bringing in undesirables to add to the undesirable population that's already living in the dunes there. With no showers, no toilets, they'll try and come into our building to relieve themselves. I don't want it. I'm sorry. And if you guys are so gung-ho to find $350,000 to fund this thing, you'd be better off spending that money on repairing the sidewalk on the east side of highway. Because that is in terrible need of repair. And I'm also a wheelchair user. And that sidewalk almost tipped me out of it because it's so bad. That's what you need to be spending your money on, not a basketball court. Nance Park is not broke. Don't fix it. It's fine as it is. Sunrise Park, I'm sorry. That's the bottom line. We don't need a park, we don't need a basketball court there.
Thank you. Mike, the, or Joe, the sidewalk that she's referencing, do you know anything about it?
No, I don't.
Ma'am, where is this at? You said the east side?
On the east side, yes, from Indy Atlantic 1 all the way down.
Is this one in parallel with A1A?
It's going to come.
Okay, that would be F dot. So I could get a hold of them and we could have it taken care of.
Thank you. It needs it.
And point of clarification, my, my correction wrong, there's no tax dollars that go to Sunrise, right? It's all enterprise?
It's all enterprise, correct.
Thank you. Carla?
For those who don't know, enterprise is the parking meters and the paid.
Paid parking and fines and things like that.
Right. A lot of people don't understand what that means.
Thank you, Brett.
Hi, Carla Ruttiger, 601 North Miramar. I thank Sarah for all your hard work. I tell you, for her, you know, all her inspiration for the park. But I too am against the basketball court. We were not given input into this. And if we were then, we would have said, everything else looks great, you know, add the dog run if you want, yoga area, but the basketball court. court would really interfere with our quality of life. I think it would be better at Nance Park also, the zip line was taken down, so that's a perfect spot for, to put the basketball court there. It's already got ample parking, it's got a bathroom, it's got showers, it's got everything that is needed for a basketball court in that park. So that's, thank you very much.
Thank you. Pete Teniza, did I get it right?
The C silent, Tenza.
Uh, it is.
New resident to the area, recently retired, thank you mayor, council for letting me speak, I'm 735 North Highway A1A, been an owner for eight years, a resident now for two. My wife and I just love Indy Atlantic, we, when we tell people about it that it's a 60s beach town, they don't believe us, and that's what we want to maintain. Great points that are brought up, parking is crazy, they park at Topaz, and then walk over, the beach is cool, and that's great, my wife and I go to the park five, six times a day, we are dog people, and the people we met there are fantastic. I did a little look at the schematic and saw that my neighbors here, that the basketball court would be seventy feet from his condo. Seventy feet that travels sound and everything, so, very much against it, and they did, I did do a letter, and someone stole my idea, yeah, they paved paradise and put up a basketball court. I'm into greenery, love greenery, and the idea on the zip line, I thought that was great, let's put it where the zip line was, that'd be perfect, but one thing that wasn't addressed, I don't know how many of you are basketball players, I probably spent thousands of hours on the blacktop playing basketball, and I love basketball. Here's the problem, we've got the Topaz, we've got the Miramar, in between, it's a wind tunnel. Ah, so for those of you that don't go out there daily, I kind of estimate maybe only 10% of the days in the year are conducive to shooting a 20-foot jump shot with the having wind blow your shot around, so, from that standpoint, along with all the others, yeah, I think we're not for the basketball court. Thanks very much for hearing us out.
Thank you. Haley Paget.
I'm obviously the only one in support of this, that's coming here to speak at this point, but I live not far, oh, 135 Michigan, I am not fortunate enough to live exactly on the beach, but I pay the taxes just like everyone else, and I think that there's a demographic we're not thinking about, and I personally don't have kids, but I know a lot of people in this family have kids and grandkids, there's not a basketball court for kids that could become, also foursquare and other things, that you can access when school is in session, or when the whole area is closed all summer, which is pretty much the time when kids go out and play outside. And not everyone in Indy Atlantic has the ability to have a hoop, sometimes they roll them out on the street, and that becomes pretty dangerous. Thing about North Fifth Avenue is it's been very much set aside compared to South Fifth Avenue, South Fifth has great parks, I know that pickleball, and there's discussions about losing basketball there, and pickleball coming in there, then like, we're really in for it, but a lot of kids can't go past Fifth Avenue, because they can't ride their bikes that far. A few of the concerns, I think, that were addressed, actually, one of the points that was just made, is a point I was going to make, is we have an average wind speed prevailing from the east of fifteen to twenty-two miles an hour in this town, so the noise seventy-five mile, seventy-five feet away is not exactly, I mean, we could test it, we could shift the courts maybe ten feet to the south and really center it between the two, but the odds are that the sounds of this court are going to hit my house, your house, everything on the other side of A1A, and it's not necessarily going to be directed towards people, not to mention it's not going to be used at night, we're not doing lights at night, the park is closed at night, activation is the key, in my opinion, to security in this town, and getting people out there, I think that park is trying, but it's failing the community. We obviously need to fix these equipment paths, but, and those are helpful for adults and my retired neighbors and all those things, but there's not a lot for kids to do, sometimes the rip currents are too big, you can't get in the water. It's just kind of a shame that we're kind of forgetting the people that can't be speaking here today, and that's, that's children, kids, and kids with people with families, so, thanks for your time, and.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and if anyone has any more questions, they can speak to me directly.
Kathy McFadden. Okay.
Hello, I'm Camillo Gagliano, I live at the Topaz, and I'm, I have the apartment that he was talking about, that's about sixty feet from where this basketball court is supposed to be, well, first of all, thank you for your service to the community, all of you. I don't think the basketball court is compatible for that type of a park, for many, many reasons. For one thing, and I looked, I, it doesn't look like you're going to put a fence around it, we don't, but, you know, we've been living there since July, and we've seen a lot of people that go in there with baby carriages, people picnicking, sitting there, you know, and I, I think it could be a dangerous situation, little kids, you know, two-year-olds, three-year-olds running around. I don't think it's the right place for it, for many, you know, that reason, and it's just not compatible. I also don't think, and I agree with the other gentleman, that we, closing, closing it up with fences and all, it's, it's beautiful the way it is, as far as being open is concerned, yes, it does need to be fresh up and beautified a little, and that would be very nice.
Hey.
Can you bring the graphic up? Sorry.
Oh, that's fine. That's all I had to say.
All right, thank you. Marcus.
How y'all doing? Marcus Horsell, 107 Watson, and I've been living between the condo, Watson, and the boardwalk for 27 years, been going by the park, as John says, it's kind of sad. First of all, these girls that have done this landscape committee, the volunteer hours, the time, what they put into it, the volunteer hours, everybody could sit up here and complain, but they're not helping, these girls are hitting the ground, they're getting architect, they're spending hours on their computer trying to get this city to look better. People hate it Publix, people hate it Starbucks, but then I see them going in there every day. So how it comes to be, guys, is sometimes you've got to have an open mind, everybody's calling this a basketball court, it's really a shooting court, it's an exercise court. I can go out there right now and bounce a ball, and none of you guys can say one thing about it. If I go there right now, just even if there's not a goal there, I can go out and bounce a ball, if that's what you're worried about, the noise. I live near the Publix, I hear semis, but I get used to it, you know, but it's, what I'm saying is like, you know, be an open-minded, like you said, we can always tweak some things, but I think improving it, we looked into a company called Greenfields, if you go up into the mountains, also South Florida, there's a company that does this, they're on the beaches, they're near condos, people love them, whether if it's younger, older, you've got grandparents taking their little kids, next thing you know, everybody's using, everybody's doing the exercise equipment. Another thing with the equipment, it's a good thing, it's all handicap accessible, which is good, because a lot of the equipment that I see is not handicap accessible, especially on the exercise systems, but most of those from Greenfields, and you guys can look those up at, I've got a website for you guys, it's GFoutdoorfitness.com, so if you guys do want to look at their site, I've been in talks with them, again, we got a lot of sponsorship money, once this thing takes the next stage. Some of the small packages they are, that they have, it's called a seven-unit system, which about thirteen to fifteen people can work out on, which is all seven-unit package, and basically it's just using your body weight, it's all galvanized aluminum and stuff like that. But that's something, there's so many different packages, but I think for that park, a seven-unit package would work, and again, and all those units are handicap accessible. The dog run, same thing, if you go up to Porcanaveral, if you have a chance, or even to Soto, stuff like that, a lot of those dog parks will have a fenced-in area, whether it's turf, you've got poop stations, all these parks also, even the equipment, come with the sign saying you're entering this at your own safety, dah 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 dah, you know, just to cut it out. Again, so most of these companies too will also offer an umbrella system, so if you want a shade system, whether if it's a trishade, or just, you know, heavy-duty umbrellas, they offer that also, so.
Thank you. Thomas Becker. Oh. That's coincidental, huh? Yeah, Becker.
My name is Thomas Becker, I live at 735 North Highway A1A. You're considering placing a small fenced dog run at the center of the park, in the plan that was proposed to you. I'm a dog lover, and, but the Ford, since I became a condo dweller, the dogs in our home are, are no longer at our home, but with our, with our three sons, the four dogs. I really enjoy seeing the dogs in their natural dog run, out there on the beach, they've got a hundred yards or more, and we'll have even a wider one when there's more sand next year, having them in a small dog fenced run that's in the park, I think you know the program, you have happy dogs, yapping, occasionally snarling and growling, and it becomes a noise situation, and large parks are good for something like that. I don't think you could find another place, perhaps, in Indy Atlantic where you'd have twenty-some households within sight distance and sound distance of that kind of situation in the park. Also, the basketball court that's been proposed, the problem with the wind has already been, been addressed, however, I've, we have, you have basketball courts now in Orlando Park, a full court and a half court, I've been down there multiple days, multiple hours in the last week, just to see if there's any use of that court, and I have yet to see anybody using the court. We have the courts there, we also have outdoor basketball courts at Hoover Middle School that are available outside of school hours, and to put more asphalt on top of that, of the land there near the ocean, doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. Sunrise Park is delightful, it's been used, it's used by many people every day of the week. They're walking their dogs, they have beach access, the small deck was used quite a bit until last year, when, when the roof was taken off. Every morning, locals gather before sunrise to watch the sunrise, maybe that's Sunrise's Park's reason for being. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Dave.
Dave Berkman, 225 Eighth, first, Marcus, well said, I echo Marcus' sentiments 100%, and Sarah did an awesome job, and I don't think anyone's recognized Haley did this for free, and did an incredible job, she deserves a thank you, so, nice job. So, take pickleball, substitute basketball, and you're having, he's laughing, because he knew I was going to say this, the same exact thing, if you put badminton in there, it's going to be the same thing, it doesn't matter, so, to Brett, to John, and to Carrie, thank you for having common sense, right? Hopefully, common sense prevail, well, there's basketball, whatever it is, right, there's going to be opposition, so, how many, can I ask the chief a question? How many complaints have you had over basketball in Orlando Park?
Recently?
In the last 20 years, is it more than five?
I would say, I mean, probably not, it's mostly just spirited language.
So, here, here's how I see the problem, and I'm going to say, I'm old, I'm 62, so if you look at the demographics for the pickleball and for here, the demographics are my age and older, people that aren't going to necessarily use this, the people that really want it are the people that are moving into our town, the people with Haley's age, and Sarah's who have, that are more about it, the town is not conducive to them, right, and we tried to get younger people in the council, you know, I'm gone, I'm old now, but we, we don't pay attention to them, right? It's the people that have the time to come to the meeting, who are retired and speak up, that don't support what the majority of these people moving here want, right? We're not looking to change the entire town, and that was all, we want to keep, you know, Queen Beach Town, you could still do that, but let's respect the people that are moving here and coming here with their kids, and we're not doing that, guys, so I think you really need to think about that, and I'm confident, you know, you guys have done that, I hope you guys are more along with that. I'm losing my voice, I'm not going to speak any further, but that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
David, one question. Why not Nance Park? Why, I'm just, I'm just asking, just, why Nance?
Oh, I don't know, I'm not saying, here's, when you guys wanted to put pickleball at Sunrise Park, I didn't, I didn't think it was going to be because of the wind, right?
Why not Nance Park, why, why Sunrise?
Do anything at Sunrise Park, you have sixteen parks in this community, sixteen in our town, right? Is that right, sixteen, Mike?
They're both in the enterprise zone, there's equal space, I just want to know why.
Doug, it's clear you don't support this, that's fine, but listen, whether you put, you didn't approve basketball, you approved the, it's my time to talk, you didn't approve the, you approved the concept, whether you could basketball in there, whatever it is, it doesn't matter, it's going to be complaint, so is basketball better at Nance Park? It'd be great to have a full court there too, but why are they mutually exclusive? You have sixteen parks in here, we've recently done nice things in Nance Park, Orlando Park is beautiful, why stop and say, oh, we can leave that park, but let's make this better? They're not mutually exclusive, Sarah's working on a plan to get this funded, she gets some great ideas, has incredible support, but the people in the room aren't them, because it's not the demographics that support it, so just be aware of that, so whether you move it, that's not my decision, whether you put the basketball.
I understand, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm asking for, just, for rational.
Point order, please, what order, can I, are we going to question everybody that comes up here, is that allowed? I'm just asking a question, are we going to be allowed to question?
I'm offering my opinion, so.
No, no, I'm, I'm directing the question to the mayor, are we going to be allowing councilmen, members to question people that come up as public speakers, is that allowed? I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to understand, I, we can talk offline.
Again, so, I'm not going to answer your question, I think it'd be better to have both, right? Why, we got, why not put a tennis court in Nance Park? That would be amazing for this community, keep the basketball courts, you've got the pickleball and tennis, put that there, that is way more conducive to tennis court in there in the future. I mean, the first thing when I spoke to Sarah was, how are we paying for it? And it was, well, she's got a great plan, she's got support, so, maybe we put a bigger roadmap together, we were still got a roadmap, but we should never do, never did that with the parks, put a roadmap for a tennis court, or maybe something else, who knows, next year it could be, you know, widget ball, but don't think, don't look at these parks mutually exclusive, I think that's a big mistake, and stop looking at the demographics who guys are entering, some are there with me, John, but it's, it's not only about us anymore, right, it's the younger.
Thank you, Dave. Bob.
Bob Sage, 5, 735 North A1A, guess what, I'm in Topaz, I've got a few opinions on it. First off, I'm sure you're aware that it's state-owned land, it's not city-owned, when we moved here, we're kind of new, 1999, the area was designated its own, it appears that the general trend is to want to change that. We do not have parking to facilitate people coming in, we do not have facilities for restrooms that have to be added into the cost. Recently did a 25-by-30 patio, four inches of betuminous, and it's $10,000 for a 25-by-30, one inch of betuminous, so this facility, my ballpark is somewhere between 125 and 150,000, where are you going to come up with the money for that? I know part of this was the DeSantis use of public state facilities, that money got voted down last week, so the money's going to have to come from somewhere else. We've got a lot of other things that are, more major type of problems. We have our primary drain, storm drains that run down from the berm down to the road, you're talking, working, putting, putting in your, your, your basketball court, or your football, basketball court, over the, the storm drains, that's going to add to the overall expense to relocate those. I'm sorry, I thought I had.
Yep.
Thank you. If you, if you can justify those kind of changes, that would be, be interesting, and that's pretty much all I wanted to say. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Uh, we, we do object to it. Uh, it is a noise process. We can hear people talking at night. Most, uh, Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings, we, uh, we go out to pick up the beer bottles along the walkway up next to our building. I'm quite certain that I'm going to, if I have younger people that are the beer and, and the drinking group, we'll get to pick up more, uh, more beer bottles for you. So, you need to make some process with the police department to do some very definite monitoring of the area, uh, starting at whatever the dusk time is. Dusk seems to be, uh, what I've noticed is somewhere starting in Oc, end of October, about six o'clock. Sunrise starts about eight o'clock. Based on that kind of thinking, we're going to get about sixty days of the year that the basketball court will be usable. And you've also got other basketball courts already established in town. Might be better to advertise them and try to get people to participate using them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Bernstein.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Bernstein, six oh one North Miramar in Indy Atlantic, apartment one eleven. I just wanted to speak for a moment about the dog run that's proposed. I think it's a great idea because the street pros is such a danger there for allowing dogs, um, a place to, to run safely. So, I think it is a good idea. It's very important that people be aware that the handler must be in that space with their dog so that if you have more than one dog, if there's any issue, the handler has responsibility for that. And to encourage that, I would encourage you to plan a seating area for the handlers to sit down, maybe a couple of chairs and a table. And, and others who don't have dogs might find that a nice thing to do, have as well. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That is not where I thought that was going to go.
He was a big advocate for making a dog beach.
Yeah. Uh, John Heilner.
John Heilner, two two seven Sixth Avenue. Dave pretty well covered what I had to say when he made the point about, uh, wow, you sat here not so long ago and listened to a lot of people being very concerned about a pickleball court next to where there's a basketball court. It has been one for years, and there's, we think about that. I think it's the only, the newness is the primary issue here, uh, which we all fear, and the points, the points have already made. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Email us. Yeah, uh, you can go through the town website. Jim. Yeah, I did not see it. Oh, there it is. Sorry.
I, I, I've already sent emails. You guys sort of know that, um, I support the people in my condo and stuff, but let's improve the park, but keep it.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Jim Seaton, six oh one North Miramar Avenue, unit two thirteen. I, I think you know that the, the people on both sides of this place, um, would rather not have that basketball court. And I'd like to just draw a couple analogies between Orlando Park and this park. In Orlando Park, the people that bought that property there, there was a basketball court probably there when they purchased. There's only a couple of houses that are even within two hundred and fifty feet of that basketball court. Most of them are farther away. Uh, there's none, none of those houses that are within a hundred and twenty-five feet of those basketball courts at Orlando, and yet you're talking here about, you know, putting them, you know, seventy-five feet away from someone's, uh, kitchen balcony and home. So, I think that's, that's one big difference. And, and the people that bought here, I don't think ever foresaw there would be a basketball court. And, and so Nance is really the right place for this for a lot of reasons. First of all, there's a natural windbreak there, um, with seagrapes and stuff, so you can play there many more days of the year, unless you're going to let the seagrapes go crazy, uh, there at Sunrise Park. And lastly, from a safety standpoint, think about kids going to a basketball court. You know, that, there's a, a push-button crossing right there in front of ABC. Kids can cross safely, go to the basketball court. It's almost right across from that crossing. At Sunrise Park, you think kids are going to go to Coast Point or down to ABC to cross? Going to cross right there at Watson, and it's, it's dangerous to put that kind of attractive thing for kids at that location.
Mr. Seaton, I have a question for you. So, when people bought over there, did, did you think, uh, do you think that they foresaw Publix or Starbucks over there?
I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what people.
Okay, that's a fair, that's a fair answer. Do you think that's a benefit to our community, those two establishments?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you think they are a benefit to our community, those two establishments?
Some people think they are, some people don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Anyone else? All right, moving on. Public comment, non-agenda items. Persons wishing to address town council on a matter not listed on the agenda may speak at this time. I forgot about that. All right, 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 right. Yeah, thank you.
You have a motion and a second.
That's right. Um, all those in favor of approving?
I just do want to say one thing real quick that I think was an important point that Haley brought up, and, uh, unfortunately, the north of Fifth Ave has been, uh, ignored on the community side of things. Uh, you know, certainly on the commercial side of Starbucks, and, and I think that's unfortunate because, uh, north Indy Atlantic is literally just as cool. I mean, the neighborhoods are just as pretty, the people are just as cool. Like, seriously, though, I mean, I hate this whole thing about sofa and all this stuff. It's ridiculous. I mean, uh, yeah, exactly. I would represent it. And they deserve, you know, uh, their own community space, and, um, that needs to be improved. And so, I just wanted to emphasize that point. I thought it was important.
All right. Anything else? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to say a couple of things. We have many openings on boards in this town that stay vacant for years. I, and I did not get involved in this town until I retired. Granted, I retired young, but I got involved with this town post-retirement. So, I would encourage anyone that has spare time in this town to get involved with this community, get on the boards, get on the committees, and that's when you have input in the beginning stages. So, I would support any resident in this town to do that. I, I, we beg for people to, to do, get on these committees. Number two, just a, just a clarification, all our parks are, thanks to a new ordinance, are open dawn to dusk. So, our police do a fabulous job of enforcing the park hours. So, after dusk, no one's there. If they are there, you just make a quick call to the non-emergency number of the police department, and they'll be gone in eight minutes or less. Number three point, um, that corridor, um, on Miramar zoned tourists. So, I think any resident would be remiss to assume that it's going to not have commercial items there. Last point, um, I live north of Fifth Avenue. I live actually off the dog leg on Wayne Avenue, and that dumpster fire as long as I've lived here. So, any improvement that we could have, I would wholly support anything that we can do to improve that part. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You're, you're done? All right. All those in favor of approving the motion by Brett, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Carrie's unanimous. All right, uh, and you're, you're free to go. They don't have to stick around if that was your hot topic. Public comments, non-agenda items. Persons wishing to address town council on a matter not listed on the agenda? Away.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Moving on. Public comment, non-agenda items. Persons wishing, uh, wishing to address the town council on a matter not listed on the agenda may speak at this time. Speakers may provide a name and address. Observe three-minute time limit and speak only, being, after being recognized. Ms. Lowe.
Kitty Lowe, Fourteenth Avenue, Indy Atlantic, Florida. Okay, I'm going to be short because you guys get to listen again. I did buy my house before a Jim came in the back of it, um, and Sherry's house. So, this is what we are subject to, uh, at least three times a day and events, um, whenever he feels like it. Here you go.
What time of day is this? What time of day is this happening?
I'm sorry?
What time of day is this happening?
Anywhere between nine and twelve o'clock, and then at night, five o'clock. At six to seven thirty, eight o'clock. This is a new one. This is not the same one. This is a different one that you have listed to that part. Hope I'm getting my point across, people. I really do. Just right outside. This is four houses. This is from four different residents. Not just my house, not just Sherry's house. This is four different residents. And it's every day. Coming to a backyard near you.
Thank you. Anyone else, non-agenda items? All right. Public announcements. There are openings of following boards and committees. Budget and Finance, Civil Service, Enforcement, and that's it. Consent agenda. There are motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Um, just pull four real quick.
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with number four polled, say aye. All opposed? All right, unanimous. Doug?
Just wanted to point out, this is obviously, this was a planned retirement, and we have the replacement vehicle. It's already in budget. So, this is all in the, and is outlined in the, in the packet, the maintenance costs for the vehicles were getting quite excessive. Didn't make sense to keep going forward, so this is all, uh, basically in accordance with plan. So, nothing, we're not getting rid of anything too soon, and we're not seeing any, uh, increase in budget, so.
Any comment? No. All those in favor of approving?
It's all locked, it's all locked up. You don't want any part of that thing.
All those in favor of approving consent agenda item number four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right. Ordinance of public hearing, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three, second and final reading, public hearing relating to deferred retirement option plan. I'll read it. In ordinance of the town of Indy Atlantic, Florida, amending chapter two, article four, division four, pension plan for police officers and firefighters, amending section two dash three two zero, deferred, uh, retirement option plan, also known as drop, to increase the participation period and add an optional benefit actuarially calculated drop, providing for severability and providing for an effective. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
I'll second.
Discussion?
No. No changes, correct, Mike?
No. No changes on that?
No changes to the ordinance for the drop?
No. Everything, like I said, is cost neutral.
All right. And chief, you're good? Both chiefs?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, public comment. All right. All those in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three, uh, related to deferred retirement option plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. That was easy. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh four, first reading, public hearing relating to renaming town hall. In ordinance of the town of Indy Atlantic, Florida, renaming the Indy Atlantic Town Hall, the Paul R. Googelman Indy Atlantic Town Hall, amending section one dash two, definitions, amending section twenty-eight dash one B subsection two, naming facilities, making findings, and providing for an effective date. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four.
Is there a second? Any comment? Uh, Carrie? Any comments? Doug, John?
No.
So, just to, just to confirm, it would be the Paul Googelman Indy Atlantic Town Hall?
Or our Googelman.
Or our Googelman, excuse me. And then, that's the ordinance that doesn't, then we would, then we would proceed to add that to the facade on the outside of the building.
Little extractor is going to, supposed to be working on that already.
Will it be backlit?
Kind of look like some, like signs like that over there, the lettering.
Right, with the power department.
I, uh, messaged Pam, Paul's widow, and, uh, she was overjoyed, so. I think she's, she is, uh, yeah, so you, you're done. All right. Public comment. All right, everybody likes Paul. All those in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four relating to renaming town hall, say aye. Aye. All opposed? There is no unfinished business, new business. Number one, footwash, Tampa Beach access. Joe?
It's going to be very expensive. We're, we're looking about ten thousand dollars for the water meter installation, um, backflow preventer, line, the line that to be run, as well as a footwash.
Is this a highly requested item?
Mr. Mayor, just real, real quick, I had asked the town staff to just look into it, just to see on the off chance if it was a, you know, a one thousand, two thousand dollar, there was a stem out from somewhere adjacent. Clearly, that's not the case. It's much more expensive and true. So, at, at one point, we weren't even sure if there used to be a, there was a question mark. So, that was just my, my ask to research it and given.
Footwash or like a shower?
Well, I, regardless, it's, I think it's cost prohibitive, yeah. Originally, it's just footwash was, that's my thought, but, uh.
Yeah. We even, we, the problem is the meter, we'd have to put, um, Cross four, Cross A1A and everything else because that's where the water line. We can't just tap off on one of the other ones from the residents and stuff. So, Mel City, Melbourne, selling that, so it's several thousand dollars and everything. And the new point of it is a footwash or a shower, it's about the same cost in that portion.
I don't, I don't advise we go any further with it. That's all. I just was.
Withdrawing from consideration. Carrie, comment? John? Brett? Public comment? All right, dead. Item number two, discuss the town council, initiate change in the name of North Riverside Place to East Minster Place. Carrie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The new pastor of East Minister Presbyterian Church approached me, of which I'm a member, so full disclosure, I'm a member of that church. And he asked, because they're celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary this year of the church being in the town. It's the only church in the town limits of Indy Atlantic as, as well, if we would consider changing that one street that goes behind the water from the church to East Minister Place in recognition of the church. I will tell you, um, as a, as a, to incentivize the council to consider this, is they have a preschool that's open to our community. They also have their first, they've revamped, they're doing a vacation Bible school, which will be open to the children in our community this summer. So, that's a week that they're, that they're out of school, that they can go and, um, participate in vacation Bible school. And there are long-term plans in the budget, um, with the church to, at some point, take that Melvin Hall. Melvin Hall, put that into a community center, which would be open to our community, and that would be done at the church's expense. So that's something that's awesome, that's forward-looking, that the church and its parishioners are going to, to try to do, and that is in the plan. So I would, I would ask, I should ask for your support as well, and I think it would be a good thing to show some stewardship, you know, towards that church in our community.
Mike or Joe, do we know how much this would cost?
Well, you require an ordinance change, renaming and this stuff, the cost would be minimal for the signage. The only good thing about that is there is one residence that has that address on Riverside Place, the Flemings, just built that.
Oh, the new one?
So it would affect their one, one residence, so they have to rename whatever their mailing and stuff would be.
And we don't need their input or anything, right?
We haven't had their input.
Well...
We don't need it though, is what I'm saying.
Actually, that's, that's a different, that's a turn. So I think all the church is asking is just that one run. So they could actually keep Riverside Place.
You could decide to name it from that point on, but it is, it's all Riverside Place from Riverside itself to...
The bend. I got you.
Either way.
John, do you have any comment?
No, I'm just thinking about that. I have no issue with it. Wasn't there a couple, like, so...
Those long doggers.
Yeah, yeah. What was the issue about that?
It was gross point and they asked about changing the name.
And like half the road is only in half is Indy Atlantic.
The other side of the road is county, the south side, and it just got too difficult. And now they drew the request.
Was more specific to that, not some sort of prohibition against?
It would, there's a likelihood it would have gotten practically difficult, all it takes is one resident to throw it into.
Yeah, I mean, if we're able to do it, I'm fine with it.
Doug?
I am supportive of, of the measure. I wasn't clear, I was, didn't catch it. Do we need to get the resident to?
We can see if they're in favor of it and we...
And bifurcate it so that they don't have to be impacted by it? I'm just curious more than anything else.
We could do it either way. We could see if they're for it, if they're not, we can do it to, you know, kind of leave it up to the thing, I got to have, you know, Joe get with them and stuff about that.
I mean, if we're going to split it, that's what bifurcate means, right?
We're going to split it, it's not an issue.
Okay. Yeah, I make a motion to, to...
You should ask them if they want it to be a place or a drive or a way, think about that, Eastminster Way, it's like, it's the Eastminster Way.
I think the pastor specifically said.
Place?
Eastminster Place.
Eastminster Boulevard. Yeah. Highway.
Highway.
Highway to hell.
Make it a byway.
Easy, killer.
We just get, do we need to take a motion tonight to do it?
What do we need?
No, because we just kind of give us the consensus and the town attorney will work on an ordinance changing it and decide if you want to split it and that's fine or...
I said we split it just to, so that we don't disrupt the one resident. I mean, I don't know if they care, but...
Question, so the, on the south side though, it would still be Riverside Place South?
On the south side, yeah, there's Riverside Place across the street by Douglas Park.
Yeah, so we can leave that, Riverside Place South.
That's River Plate Place House.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
The shortcut.
And there's still, where Riverside comes out on the gravel roadway and things, that's up there Riverside Place up that way too.
Where?
On North Riverside Drive, it comes out about Michigan.
Oh, yeah, there's a little cut through back there.
It's still North Riverside Place.
Yeah, because there's a right of way that goes through their yards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no other residence's address there, all those have Riverside addresses.
That would just be this little section.
I mean, do you know the resident that lives there?
The Flemings?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know him personally, but maybe Joe's dealt with him.
Yeah, it's like four houses, Mr. Mayor.
It's what?
There's four houses.
We're not, we're not talking about the north, we're talking just there.
Just in front of, yeah.
But actually, that house is actually 401 North Riverside Drive. It's not Riverside Place.
Oh.
I thought it was North Riverside Place.
No, they work for Riverside Place, Flemings, did you know that?
Yeah, because I haven't looked it up and...
No, Riverside Place.
Yeah. So that...
I mean, we can ask them, you know, if they have a preference, if they...
Figure a name of place or something. We don't know any other places in town.
Yeah.
Let's just figure out the...
Yeah. I mean, I'd say give, give, give the resident the option. If they want Eastminster as a, as an address, give them Eastminster, if they don't, we'll cut it. You guys would be good with that?
I would do that.
I'm good with it.
We'll just have to, if you, I'm sorry to interrupt, if you do do that, we have to give it to county with GIS mapping and stuff like that too, for just keep it on. No cost, but we, just let them know so we can give it to county.
Thank you.
We can do that. All right, yeah, so I think we're all in agreement.
So we'll work on whether they're on board or not board and bring back an ordinance for you next month.
Okay. All right, administrative reports, Mike?
Yeah, one thing I know we talked about, I'll make a note so I don't forget about the park, uh, thing. We had talked in a code thing earlier about parking and things, and we do have some situations going on now, and I'm aware of. And based upon what we're looking at, I have instructed our, our engineer, I had a meeting with him today, but I talked to him last week about doing a parking study for our commercial zones, including tour zones and everything else, to include traffic study and looking our, as he said, our 1960 ordinance is way out of date. So I've instructed him that, based upon that, I'm going to ask, or kind of state right now, I'm going to bring you next month, a, like a 90-day moratorium to, and we can extend it from there, of doing any enforcement on parking regulations at this time for counterparking, not like parking in the street and things, just for the businesses and things like that and any code violations.
Okay. And do we know how long that, that study's going to take?
I don't have a timeframe yet, but I'm sure with, I'm about, to, probably, I'll ask them, although we didn't really talk about that today.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Kristen?
Good evening. I don't have anything to report at this point, but it sounds like we'll have a few things to be working on from here, so thank you.
All right, thanks. Doug?
Nothing new to report, obviously enjoy the Easter egg hunt this coming weekend, as noted, it's always a fun time.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM and go Gators.
Yeah. Brett?
Go Gators. I was dancing on the street 19 years ago, when I lived there, when we won our first basketball national championship. So having a three-year-old daughter fall asleep in the bed to me as we wanted, I'm like, quietly, quite a change in life, but, so.
John?
I just want to make a note of something. There was an email received this morning that I received, and here's an excerpt of that email. And it's from a citizen that continues to email city hall about complaints. Says, please, and this is an excerpt of the email, "Please keep in mind that my, and my neighbors' concerns and complaints are over, are over just one restaurant located in our neighborhood where there was none before. Don't take any of the attached analysis as a complaint against any other business." The citizen doesn't volunteer any boards, doesn't do any volunteer work up here at the town, and I see this, he seems to like analogies, so this analogy is just like, we all know there's cars speeding down A1A every day, right? So it would be very much like saying, acknowledging, yes, there's speeding, but we're only going to enforce the speeding on red Corvettes. So I just want us to keep that in mind as we look at code enforcement or any kind of enforcement actions, that it's got to be uniform across the town. Thank you.
Carrie?